Okay, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight for our Affordable Health Care Act informational session. I have Stacy here from the Northern Kentucky Community Action Commission and she's just going to give us a brief overview of what the Health Care Act details, how to sign up, and some of the benefits, and pretty much tell you that it's painless as one of our members of our audience found out tonight.
Thank you. Well, as she stated, I'm here with the Northern Kentucky Community Action Commission for the Connect program. It is the federal version of Affordable Care Act for the state of Kentucky. And as she stated, according to our people that have joined us tonight, it's fairly simple to get signed up. Basically, it changes requirements for your medical coverage, as everyone's aware of that we're going to have to have it if it's not offered. So Connect is Kentucky's link for that. And for information, you can get it either on the website at connect.ky.gov, or you can call for an appointment or information at 859-581-6607. And we are at this time taking appointments for enrollments. Some of the changes that we're going to cover on the Connect will be changes in Medicaid is now pretty much strictly based off your income of the household. And information that you would need to provide for an appointment when you come in will be to bring your identification, social security number, and any income information that is available. Enrollment is until March 31st, but if you're enrolled by December 15th, your coverage will start January 1st. Thank you.
As I said, we've just given a brief overview. I know a lot of people have questions. We were hoping to have a lot of people come out with those questions tonight. I guess that is all for now.
Are there dental options?
Okay, is dental going to be offered?
Dental is available in the plans. It's not an option in all plans, but it is an option to purchase separately from the medical coverage.
What about for children?
For children, all children under the age of 19 will have dental coverage if they qualify for Medicaid. And if the plan has to be purchased, then it is an option. It's always covered.
Children have to have dental.
So for any children, it's covered.
Yes, they have to have dental.
Under the age of 19.
Now, I've heard a lot of people, and you've heard a lot in the news, about how horrible it is to get on the federal website. What's different with Kentucky's site?
Kentucky's site is strictly for residents in the state of Kentucky, so we're not, we don't have a population group that the federal site has.
So is it easier to use it?
Yes, much easier. And depending on the size of the household, that's usually what it takes, the amount of time the appointment takes to get enrolled. Like one of our people that showed up tonight said it took her about 10, 15 minutes.
Which wasn't...
She said not even that long.
Now, I know a lot of people will ask about cost. If they call in just to talk to you, what can you tell them about cost?
Well, cost more is always based around income, obviously. The Medicaid threshold has changed for a single household for $15,857 a year. As far as premiums, they're again, they're always on income.
So you can't just call in and say, "Hey, I'm 57 years old and I need insurance. How much is it going to cost?"
Correct. But you can go online and do a free screening at the website, which again is connect.ky.gov. And you can get information there as far as what your premiums will be, and you're not required to enroll just by going to free screen.
Okay. You know, it's a shame, there's people behind us who said, "If I'm not good at giving reviews, I could do a free paper, I could do a review." It's a shame people are thinking there's people behind us who can actually talk to them about 13, 15, or such, or that process.
Right, there is somebody in every community action commission center, in every county, that is available to help you, and that's what we're setting up appointments for. So we'll set up an appointment, you come in, and we'll get you through the free screening and enrollment process.
Well, again, I want to thank you for coming out. And if you have questions, please contact the Community Action Commission. And look for the flyers. I believe Stacy and Margie have posted flyers for kynect.ky.gov throughout the city. They've been found in the Laundromat, Bay of New Pharmacy, Riverside, you know, all your local places, you can find the information, and it's in the schools. So thank you once again for coming out and for taking time out of your schedules to be here.
Please, everyone, welcome to the December 3rd City of Dayton council meeting. Anyone please rise for a member's silent prayer. I'd like to be sure to remember Senator Callahan who passed away over the weekend. Senator Callahan, Representative Callahan was a very good friend of the City of Dayton and all of Northern Kentucky, really. So if you can remember him or her parents, I'd appreciate it. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you hear the roll call, please?
Mayor Rankin, Member Hurt, Member Burns, Member Volter, here. Member Boruski, Member Allen, Member Gifford, City Administrator Redmond, City Attorney Fisher.
Every year, I've had a tradition of naming a volunteer of the year for the City of Dayton. And I usually do this at Light of Dayton. And in the evening time, we used to give away the toys. But usually, this volunteer of the year never comes with that, so I'm going to have to make a small change, and I'm going to present a volunteer of the year tonight at the council meeting. So Elmer Perry could come up there, I'd like to see him just a second.
Oh, yeah.
This is a spot. This is the City of Dayton, Kentucky Proclamation 2013, number two. The proclamation honoring Elmer Perry as City of Dayton Volunteer of the Year. Whereas Elmer Perry has been a valued member of the community for decades as a native citizen and has provided venerable services as volunteer for the City of Dayton. And whereas Elmer Perry has organized and directed a most valuable program at the Dayton High School called Reality Store for many years, as well as organizing volunteers for income-producing programs at Dayton High School. Whereas Elmer Perry was instrumental in organizing the first Dayton tour of churches displaying its historic and architectural aspects of the Dayton religious community. And whereas Elmer Perry has been the essential member of the Main Street Board promoting new businesses to serve the community. And whereas Elmer Perry has been a loyal, hard-working member of the museum board, which was recently opened, the first museum in the history of Dayton, and he has donated historic memorabilia for the entire section of the museum. He's almost as a bus as Charlie Thorpe. Whereas Elmer Perry has recently been a crucial component of the committee which founded the Fifth Quarter Program, providing a place and entertainment for the youth of Dayton at their Dayton High School athletic competitions at various churches throughout the community. Whereas Elmer Perry has for many years opened his yard to the youth of the neighborhood for play activities, swimming, and the neighborhood children refer to him as the mayor of Third Street. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the City of Dayton from Campbell County, Kentucky, that Elmer Perry is hereby honored as Volunteer of the Year in Dayton, and the city congratulates him and thanks him profusely for his efforts, proclaimed by the mayor of the City of Dayton, Kentucky this third day of December 2013. Thank you very much. And then also, we have a little more presentation for you. We haven't embarrassed you enough for pretty much, but we want to do just a little bit more. This is the key of the city, presented by Elmer Perry, Volunteer of the Year 2013, for over 40 years, 40 years of service to the community, City of Dayton, Kentucky. Elmer.
Just on every quarter, I don't have anything to say.
Thanks, Mayor. Elmer, thank you for everything you do.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Elmer. Here, you want me to hold that key? We've got a little advanced news, so.
Wow, that's too much.
I guess I have to move over, say, you can't bring me a haul.
Elmer, if you have any friends here, Elmer, if you have any friends here at all, they don't want to stay, they're going to have to stay.
I don't have any friends.
My sister and my brother-in-law are here tonight.
Would you like to introduce them?
My sister Vera Stock and her husband Bob.
Nice to meet you.
She helped at the museum a lot. I mean, when it was really dirty, hard, filthy work, she was right down there in the basement. We was all cleaning that basement out, and there was dirt down there, a half inch thick.
Thirty-seven flood.
Yeah, so she helped out a lot, volunteer. And every time I've asked her to come and help, she's been there.
She looks really nice, and it's going to heat her better in a few more weeks.
She's a good girl from Clay Camp.
That's right.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, Elmer.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for everything you do.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jay Brewer from the Dayton Independent School District.
Dayton Council, something other PowerPoint. I'm excited to be here while he's trying to get us technology updated there. I do want to thank the city for the great collaboration, cooperation that's occurring between the schools on so many different levels, whether it be Scott O'Brien and his group that continues to come down. Scott was down with us last night, had a great turnout. Jam-packed library full of parents and kids talking about substance abuse and different things like that. You know, the continued fire department, I know they had a run down there today, a little situation that we have. They're always great. And then the renovation of Green Devil Lane has just been great on so many different levels. Just aesthetically, it's a lot cleaner. And safety-wise, for those of you who've watched school kids come and go up and down Green Devil Drive battling buses and the API trucks, it's nice to see them all out of the way safely to the side, so that's outstanding. So I know that cooperation will continue, and it's exciting to be a part of this and see the schools continue to grow as well. So one of the mottos we've got going on at Dayton schools is "Go Grow Dayton," because that's what we're about, is growing our kids, growing our teachers, and growing our leaders. So we're stressing that growth that we're seeing down there at our schools. If you want to go to the next slide there, just a few pictures of some exciting things. The first picture up on the left is our Big Box of Books event, which our third event of the year, or the third event in a year and a half is going to occur Thursday night. We're working with ReadAloud.org in which students are getting $50 worth of books in a big box. Thus the name of the Big Box of Books events. Only district in the state of Kentucky getting that, so this is our third time. So we've had families coming through for the third time, working with that home literacy piece for our kids. So right now, we have, some families have gotten over $150 worth of brand-new books. So that's an exciting piece. So I believe Mrs. Dragon said, "We're in trouble with ReadAloud.org." And I said, "What have we done now?" She goes, "We've got too many kids signed up." So we have over 200 students signed up for tomorrow's event. I said, "That doesn't sound like a problem at all." I said, "The problem would be if we only had 12 students signed up." So I said, "I'm sure we'll make it work." So it's like Thanksgiving dinner, the more the merrier. The other picture is a recent graduate. We had Ray Jones graduated from Dayton High School in October. Our school board's been progressive at looking at different ways to meet students' needs, and we've created a, for students who are struggling to complete graduation on time, often they have to come back that fifth year, but they only need one credit. And for some students to come back and spend the whole day to get one credit, they just don't see the value in that of hanging around from September or August until May for one credit with us all day long, and all kinds of issues can occur on that level. With instruction being the way it is, a lot of it's computer-based, you can come in and earn a credit online, and as soon as the credit's earned, the student graduates. So so far this year, we've had two students graduate as what we call fifth-year seniors. So they can't graduate early, but in their fifth year, once they complete graduation, we can get them on their way and out the door with their full diploma. So that's pretty exciting for us, and we're looking for number three here in January. The lower picture there, many of you probably followed that story of the World War I plaque that we work with, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, to restore that back up there. That was such a great experience for our kids to see that restored and put back in place. And if you haven't attended our Veterans Day program, you need to. It's spectacular, to say the least. So we'll roll to the next slide. These are regional rankings, and I think my circle has moved, and it moves on me when I move things. And I don't know why we would be circling Ludlow instead of Dayton, but that's me and my technology. But as you can see, we are firmly in the middle of the regional rankings, according to the state. School districts that we are ahead of, if I can read there, we're ahead of Mason County, Blacken County, Earlanger, Pendleton County, Owen County, Belton, Galton County, Carroll County, Covington, Silver Grove, and Newport. So our progress has really been tremendous growth here in the last couple of years, and we're really excited about that growth. You look at the districts that are above us, being Ludlow is really the only River City schools on our current radar. And Ludlow, I'm a 1986 graduate of Ludlow High School, and I was principal there for four years. So I'm proud to see the Panthers do very well, but we certainly have our eyes on them and are working in collaboration with some of the ideas that they have in place. And then you see a lot of the larger school districts ahead of us and some of the other independents in the area. So we're pleased with our progress there in our regional rankings. If you move to the next slide. This is an interesting slide, and I'm trying to provide some data and some background and perspective, because our school's only going to go as far as the city goes, and the city's only going to go as far as the school goes. And the mayor and I have had numerous conversations on that. We can't do this alone. And one of the trends that we are struggling with is student enrollment. And obviously, the city plays a big part of that, attracting families into town. If you look at our enrollment, in 1995, '96, we had 1,351 students. And currently, our enrollment, as of making this slide, we're 840. I think we're getting close to 850, so we get pretty excited when we get a few numbers going that way. But if you look at the student enrollment decline over the last, you know, nearly 20 years, we've lost quite a bit of students. That's not unusual for what I call the River City districts. If you start with Silver Grove, they're struggling with student enrollment. If you look at Bellevue Independent Schools, they're about 100 students fewer than we are. Newport's consolidated schools, closed Milgram Dean, I believe it was, and I think they're moving to another phase. Somebody threw the number out at me the other day that Newport had 5,000 students at one time, and they're down to 1,500.
Wow.
Jeff works over at Covington Schools, they've closed elementary schools and consolidating in that area, too. And then I know our good friends in Ludlow are down about 200 students as well. So the challenge along the river is the same for a lot of districts. What that means for us, we get about $3,800, if you want to go to the next slide, I believe. We get about $3,800 per student, and I hate to talk about students just as dollars, because obviously, it'd be more than that. But there's a point in time when you do have to talk about students as being dollars. So we'll round them up and call them $4,000 a pop. And every 10 students I lose is about $40,000. So every time 10 students walk out of the district, I need to be sending a teacher out of the district, too. And that's tough to balance when the kids don't always leave at a certain grade level at a certain time. One of our greatest challenges is shown here, is that our student average is K through eight, we average about 70 students a class. And then we go nine, 10, 11, 12, we're averaging about 50. So that's a pretty big statistical jump for us. And met with our staff advisory team today, and we started talking about what can we do to hold our numbers at that 12, 11, 10, 9 age groups? And because if I get, if I hold that 70 average across the board, I get 80 students back. 80 students is $300,000. $300,000 for us is a lot of money. We dropped one day off of our school calendar, that was $30,000 to pay staff for one day. 1% raise for our staff is $60,000. I am required, I am bound, to give step increases to our staff every year. Our step increases alone are $50,000. And without getting any extra revenue from the state, which we're not, you guys keep up on that, and if we're not increasing our student enrollment, which you saw the slide that shows we're not, we're kind of not in a good spot financially. So what we have been forced to do, and I know the tax rate's not a real popular thing, because I know we're in the top 10 in the state, the only way for us to raise funds are to get more students in our door or to raise the property tax rate. Raising the property tax rate for me about covers our salary step. So my choice as superintendent is either raise the tax rate or send another teacher out the door. And that's sending another teacher out the door while still educating at the same level. So there's a lot of complicated numbers and issues that we're facing financially. But fortunately, there's, I think, some hope for us where some other districts aren't, and hope's standing right over my shoulder here on this big map and this project coming along the river. And that hope is going to do two things, and my belief is lower the property tax rate, because it has a way of equalizing itself out. We've seen that in Bellevue, we've seen that in Ludlow when their huge developments, Dennis Redmond said, "Yeah, it's going to come down when these go in and those go off." And our other hope is we have to find ways to retain our students in the upper grade levels. And everybody's asked me, "Where do they go?" And I'm kind of like, "Well, it's kind of like counting the deer in Fort Thomas, where they're all over the place, and it's just impossible to get an idea of where they're coming and going and all those jazz." But we do lose them to dropping out, we do lose them to NCC, we do lose them to Highlands, we do lose them to homeschooling, you know? So there's a number of different places, but our challenge is going to be taking those K through eight numbers and holding them into the high school. So we welcome that challenge and look forward to finding 80 more students. Our goal is we need to get back up to 900 students. And I know Ken sent me a letter, I got it from Dennis today, on some innovative ways of taking some of the property in town and abating some of the school taxes, and we're working on our end to see really how that binds the school to different things. But to me, I think it's a very proactive measure on the school's part and the city's part to look at taking some of these properties and getting families in them and getting the tax dollars back into those. So I'm encouraged by that as well. Next slide, please. This is exciting here. Lincoln Elementary School, we've done a four-year overall analysis of our progress and state assessment scores. 2010, 2011, as you see there, it might be hard to read, overall, Lincoln Elementary out of 723 schools in the state was ranked 616. In 2009, we were 628. Keep in mind, you want to be number one, you don't want to be, it's not like bowling, it's more like golf, so you want to be low. Those years there, when you see us at 688 for reading, 630 for math, and then you look two years down, you see some tremendous growth there of what's occurring at Lincoln Elementary School, in particular in math and reading, and that's hugely encouraging. And then when you look at the overall ranking, it's been a tremendous growth that's occurring at Lincoln School. So our hopes are, you build that foundation, they come to the middle school, they continue to have success, and it builds into the high school. So we have to build that base, and some great things are happening at Lincoln Elementary School. You may have seen the renovation that we had, 1.75 million, that really turned the interior of that building around, so that was positive as well. The next slide should show our middle school. Now, middle school is recognized as a priority school by the state in 2010 and 2011, meaning they're in the bottom 5%, and an education assistance team was assigned to that building and remains in that building for the next two to three years. We're starting to see some traction there. Our overall ranking in 2010 was 310 out of 324, and we've moved up to 257. So that's been nice growth as well. Starting to get a little bit of traction in the area of reading and math, and seeing some really nice traction in the area of social studies as well, but the growth we're seeing there is positive as well. And then if you'll forward one more slide. Probably our darkest day and darkest year was 2010, 2011, with Dayton High School being ranked 229 out of 230 schools. And that could go back to some of the issues that we're still facing with the current high school enrollment numbers and people not wanting to send their children there. But as you can tell, 2012, 2013, we've made great progress, and we're ranked 162 in that area. Our other scores are starting to move. We really need to move that reading and math faster, but it's a greater challenge to move those older kids in the areas of reading and math, because there's so much that we have to make up. So we have to get them at the early level and continue to build them up through. Next, we have community engagement. We've really been reaching out to the community. We have a one-to-one reader program that I believe we have more volunteers than anyone in the region in this program. Those are community members, adults come in, and if anyone in the community, it's too late to join in this year, but you can start next year. You take a six-hour reading training class, so it isn't just throwing you to the wolves. You take a six-hour reading training class on our campus, and then you're assigned, an elementary student that you buddy up with 30 minutes once a week, is your one-to-one reading mentor, and then you continue the next year in that program. I have a reading mentor, I meet with him every Thursday. It's a great relationship for me to have and for him to have another advocate on his side. Our high school students are one-to-one readers, and that's, to me, one of the most exciting parts, is we have about 20, 30 high school students that once a week will go up and partner with them. The cool thing about it, those high school students have to sit through that six hours of reading training. And I know they'll be adults someday, and they'll have children someday, and that'll come back and help them. The Big Box of Books, we talked about Veterans Day, we've mentioned a little bit of a big day for us. Born Learning Academy, we got a grant through Toyota, and that's preschool-age parents coming in, in an eight-week parenting class. We've got about 15 parents going through that. That's pretty exciting. Scott O'Brien has been meeting with Bonnie Hedrick and some others, Kathy Volter as well, on our community drug committee, I guess we call it. We really haven't given ourselves a title, but I think we've met three or four times on just what can we as a school do to move forward with the substance abuse issues that we're facing? And we're going to pilot a program, I believe, fourth grade, fifth grade?
Fourth.
Fourth, I think it's fourth grade, starting in January, would that help? And we've had three community volunteer days, where we've had different groups coming in, painting in the school, landscaping in the school, so it's been exciting to see different groups coming in and helping us out. If you want to hit the next slide. Facilities improvement, we had the 1.7, $5 million renovation at Lincoln, where we did all-new floors, we painted everything from top to bottom, new gym floor, new smartboard technology, secured entrance. If you've been down there, it's kind of like being in lockdown now, which we're excited about. Protects our students and protects our staffs. The bathrooms were completely gutted, renovated, new tack strips to display student work, and the library was renovated as well. We've had collaboration with the City of Dayton to pave Green Devil Lane and to put the sidewalk in, which, again, may sound like a small deal, but if you were seeing our students walking in the street every day, it's a huge win for us down there. And then the improved traffic flow. ease some of the traffic up on the main drag as well. I think things are going in and out of there.